Time is now 7:00 PM. I'll call a meeting to order. Can we have the pledge allegiance to the flag, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Under citizens' comments, Ernie Johnson.
I'm Ernie Johnson, 16 Ward Street, and I've got two things I'd like to talk about. Number one, I brought you in the town report for the town of Dennis versus the Auburn town report, which I've been fighting for like four years for the town to do it properly, I consider properly. And I think if you look at Dennis' report, they tell you where every dollar and cent is going, and there's not a lot of lump sums. Auburn is a bunch of lump sums that things can be hidden in, and it's the right of the taxpayer to know where every dollar is going. And it's very easily done. It's a nice report. It's easy to read. Now, you take the Auburn report, well, the school committee is in like six different pages, a little bit here, a little bit there. I have been up to the school committee on that. I have talked to the accountant and the superintendent of schools about being all over the book. Also, all these lump sums, and lump sums, you can hide a lot of things, and that shouldn't be done that way. And I guess that's about all I say. I don't know how you guys feel about that Dennis report, but I think it's very nicely done. I know why it wasn't taken up years back, but I know why. Also, on this, people, we have the little kingdoms here where people are voted into office, and it appears they become the untouchables. They can, as long as they live within their budget and do the things, they have a right to, they don't have to work 40 hours if they don't want to, as long as they tell, make sure the work is done by others. And I didn't realize this myself until about a year and a half ago. I just assumed when you've got a job, you work 40 hours, but it's not that case. And I'm glad, I hope and pray, we change this charter. And it's, and to remove these people is like an impossibility. I have been before the former executive secretary back a few years ago on a piece of land which a fellow hadn't paid tax on for 15 years, but had bought my land, and I wanted to know if I could buy it, whatever the price. He said, "Well, I can't do anything. The selectmen can't do anything. You have to talk to the town treasurer." So I mean, at that time, it just caught me like off guard. I didn't know, you know, that she was in charge. But now that I've learned more about what is going on, alls I can say is I hope that we get that new charter where people, maybe it'll be better for everybody because everyone will have to work closer together and not just say, "I'm on my own. To heck with you." And I guess that's about all I got to say. Have a nice holiday.
I give you too, Ernie. Agenda item four, public hearings and presentations. We have change of manager for Piccadilly Pub Restaurant. It's not 7:10 yet. We have to hold off. You take 4B?
Yeah.
4B is recycling in town. Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Chairman, I throw you to the board. I'd like to introduce to you tonight a state employee who is also a resident of Auburn. Amy Sullivan is here. She is an employee of the Mass Department Environmental Protection, and she's involved in a particular type of program in the state that allows her to donate some hours, courtesy of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, to the town. Accordingly, she'll be coming, working out of Town Hall four hours a month, which is what the state program allows, to try to harness or increase our recycling effort, not only for town departments, but the residents as well. We've had several discussions about this, and I think we all realize, and I know the board realizes, that this is basically money. This is revenue. This is an expense. And the more public education, the more departmental education we can do, there's a direct impact on the fiscal budget. So Amy is here tonight. You'll find later in your agenda, she is a nominee for the Solid Waste Program Committee, and right now, she's prepared a relatively short PowerPoint to explain the recycling issue. And you have a copy of her resume. So the one vote that I would like you to make is just the acknowledgement that she is within the town so we can inform Mass DEP that we're accepting that offer.
So moved. Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Thank you. As Mr. O'Connor said, I have lived in Auburn for about eight years. I work for the DEP in Worcester for the Waysite Cleanup Program. I also helped to co-found the Green Team at the office. We promote recycling and environmentally sound practices in the office. You may remember, I assisted the town back in the summer. We applied for a grant to get some educational materials. Unfortunately, that has been eliminated with recent budget cuts, so we won't be getting those materials now. But I am still going to volunteer my time to help increase the recycling rate in Auburn. Virginia Schnee is here. She's also going to donate, volunteer some time, help me with this effort. And we've put together a brief presentation on why we believe it's so important. Some people may not realize, recycling is actually mandatory in Massachusetts. There's a regulation called Waste Ban, prohibits the disposal or transfer of disposal of certain hazardous or recyclable items. There's fairly extensive list. I'm just going to give a few examples of things that you may not realize are actually banned for the incinerator. Should be recycling aluminum, metal, plastics, the numbers one through six, and paper. So recycling is very easy. The town already has a dual-stream program. All they're asking that you separate out is the paper products. Everything else can go in the same bin. Paper's valuable and easy to recycle. You can either use a brown paper bag or a separate bin, as long as it's marked as recyclables. You can use more than one, and once people start recycling, it does become second nature. Some quick facts about some paper products that can be recycled. Catalogues and magazines, boxes, all office paper. Most of your junk mail can go right in that paper bag and get recycled. Phone books, lottery tickets. If people take the train, those Charlie cards can be recycled. Shredded paper and wrapping paper, as long as it's not the foil and no bows or ribbons, can be recycled. Some of the benefits of recycling. The town pays a tipping fee at the wheel abrader facility for every ton of solid waste that goes there. Every ton that gets diverted would save the town money. Some people have to buy those blue bags if they exceed the capacity of their trash toter, so it would save people money if they were recycling more of that. It's actually included in the fee, so it's free to recycle. It's included, it's not free. Recycling saves resources, obviously. That's natural resources. That's a great benefit. Couple of statistics about the energy conservation. Recycling is, recycling of paper saves up to 70% of the energy, and aluminum, up to 85% of energy costs. Recycling reduces grass, greenhouse gases. Everyone's hearing about the carbon footprint these days. Recycling is one great way to help to reduce that. Recycling also creates jobs. We have the Casella facility right in town. You may know somebody who works there. Another fact I just wanted to point out, EPA has an estimate that up to 85% of a typical household trash or waste that they're throwing out can be recycled, and a lot of that is paper. I think they have like 40% of that is paper or cardboard products that could be recycled. And the ultimate benefit of recycling is cleaner earth for children, future generations. Some of the things I would hope to achieve as a recycling coordinator, as I say, I would like to increase the participation, get our recycling rate up. I would provide outreach and education, answer questions. I would research future grant opportunities for the town. I would like to update the website with more clear recycling instructions and information to dispel common myths. I know some people feel that they're separating out the recyclables and they're not actually being recycled. There's, that's, some people believe that, but it's not true. They do sometimes use the trash trucks to collect recyclables. I know Central Mass, I've spoken with somebody there, and they also have some trucks that are split. They put the recycles in one side and the trash in the other, so they are actually bringing it to the recycling facility. And I would like to look into some incentives for recycling. Some towns have, they participate in the Recycle Bank program. I don't know if you've heard of it. People can earn credits or gift cards or coupons for businesses in town if they increase their recycling. I would also like to see recycling as standard operating procedures at schools, town buildings, condos, and eventually at businesses also. So these are some of the resources. I appreciate the opportunity to work with the town, and I look forward to serving in this role. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy. Any comments from board members?
Just that you save me some time, I'm going to stop taking the little cellophane piece off the envelopes before I put it into the kitty box.
Okay. It all can go in.
We have Mr. Stadolsky here from Central Mass. I don't know if he would like to make any comments regarding.
Good evening all. Thank you, Bob. Had brought it to my attention that Amy was going to be here this evening, so I was glad to come up and spend a few moments. I will have a conversation with Amy after the presentation's over and like to work with her as behalf as a partner in the community and try to increase the goals in recycling efforts, and hopefully we can all achieve the common goal and make the town a greener place to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Bill?
So then a question for either one of you in terms of how things are calculated. So you had indicated that recycling is mandatory, but we, I think, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we've always sort of billed it at the town level as voluntary. Has that changed now? Is it mandatory when it gets to the waste place that they separate it?
I think the reg went into effect maybe 1999. They've added to the list, started with things like tires, white goods, construction, demo debris. The generator is responsible. The state can enforce it against the facility, the hauler, or the generator, so they can reduce the load.
I guess what I'm wondering is, so I, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, because it could have changed along the way and I might have missed it, but in some communities, they have mandatory recycling at the curbside. Again, ours has always been billed as voluntary, if I'm not mistaken.
It should actually be billed as mandatory because the state mandates it.
So that's also something we should change, because, I mean, and you can see that as you drive around town, that, you know, many people don't put out the blue bins. So it's clearly not being done. So that's one. And then the other one is on the tipping fee. So I, myself, I separate out everything. I mean, I separate out the paper, then I separate out the plastics, and then the tin cans and all of that in separate bins. But you're saying just paper?
Yeah. You don't need to separate the other items, just the paper needs to be separated.
Okay. So right now, as I separate all that other stuff out, it goes into the recycling truck, but if it goes into the regular bin, is that going towards our tonnage? I'm trying to get at the cost savings. Can we save more if we separate it out?
I want to speak to that better.
Can you repeat that question, please?
So my question is, if we separate out everything, so if it goes in the green bin, if the tin cans and the plastic goes in the, in the green bin, and then you're separating it at your facility, is that counting towards our tonnage as a town?
What we do is, when it goes into the truck, we take what we classify as commingled material, which would be bottles, cans, and things of that nature. That is being looked at as a separate commodity, and that tonnage is getting applied toward the big number of recycling.
So it's being deducted from our tipping?
Well, it has, it's not even going into the tipping fee as far as wheel abrader is concerned.
Okay.
Anything that's picked up as trash in the green bins or in the blue bags is considered MSW or municipal solid waste. That material is all being transported to wheel abrader. Anything that the residents don't put into the bin is being put in as recycling is obviously helps, helps save on the tonnage fee.
So that's the point I'm trying to get at. If we get people to separate out the plastic, that's why, that's why I was concerned about that statement. If we get people to separate out the plastics and the tin cans and things like that, does it cost savings to the town?
Absolutely. Well, the more that comes out of the waste stream that goes to wheel abrader is obviously going to save the town.
So we should be communicating that. We shouldn't be telling people just to put paper in the bin. Am I wrong here?
They should be, they should be putting everything that's recyclable into the recycling bin.
Into the bins?
Absolutely.
Amy?
Yes. I'm sorry if I was unclear. Anything that's diverted from wheel abrader, it's going to go to Casella to get recycled, saves us on the tipping fee.
Yeah, because I've heard, I've heard that once before, is that we, the paper we separate out, but we commingle the other stuff, but does it cost savings to the town if we separate everything out into those blue bins? And I think we need to communicate that to the community, because anything we can take off of our tonnage, it's saving some town and it keeps rates down. Yep, good.
Amy, based, based on what you're saying and what we should be doing, our containers, which we're using at roadside, should be reversed. We should have a larger receptacle for recyclables and a smaller receptacle for the so-called trash.
It's something we can look into. That's what they do in Holden, and it works. So something to research, definitely.
Mr. Chairman, I think that there are a lot of those items that will come from this particular assignment, having her on board, and not only in terms of the citizenry, but particularly in terms of departments.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're back to agenda item 4A, the change of manager for Piccadilly Pub Restaurant. We have an application related to the documents and memo from the police chief regarding the application. Do we have the person from Piccadilly Pub here this evening? I believe last time we said, open the hearing. Motion to open the hearing?
Motion to open the hearing.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion. Mr. Weston.
You know, it's mine that these people are swapping managers and things like that. I think that we should have the courtesy of somebody from that establishment to be here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Mr. Chairman, I think what the board had stated previously was when it was their first application, this is a change in manager.
Myself personally, I'd like to see someone from that establishment here.
Was there a vote on? Were they asked to be here?
But there was a vote. It was a change in manager. The vote of the board some time ago was if it was a new application, that they were required to appear. This is a change in the employee who's the manager of the establishment.
Well, I make, I'd like to make a motion that even if it's a change in management, I'd like to have somebody from that corporation or whatever be here, at least explain, you know, the change and who they're going to change it to. Like to make that a motion.
I don't think just someone should be here. I think if they're going to make the motion, it should be the individual who's going to be the manager, because they're the one that's responsible for them holding to the license and the rules, laws, and regulations of the town, so.
Yeah, I'll make the friendly amendment then.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No. Mr. Griffins?
No, I said aye.
Motion to close, should we, we need to close the hearing. So motion to close the hearing?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Agenda item five, appointments and resignations. Committee vacancies. The board continues to advertise for members for Traffic Advisory Committee. No applications have been received. Youth Commission, no applications received. Natural Resources Planning Program and Open Space Recreation Planning Committee. The board has not received a recommendation from the committee on the application forwarded to it after the last meeting. The alternate delegate for Central Mass Regional Planning, no applications have been received. On the Council on Aging, agenda item 5B, we have a letter from the Executive Director of Elder Affairs that states that the council is recommending the appointment of Orman Moody to fill the seat vacated by Deanna Gargens. A motion would be in order to appoint Mr. Moody to a term expiring 6/30/09.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Agenda item 5C, resignation on the Council on Aging. We have a letter from Mr. George Fornier resigning from his council because he has moved out of Auburn. A motion would be in order to accept his resignation and to send him a letter of appreciation.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote, and a motion would be needed to advertise for the vacancy.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Agenda item 5D, Solid Waste Committee enclosed. We have two applications. A motion would be in order to appoint Amy Sullivan and Virginia, is it Shenney?
Schnee.
Schnee. Sorry. To the Solid Waste Committee for terms expiring 6/30/09.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. Is this a committee that is standing and has a chair that we would consider sending these to that committee, or is this a committee that does not have that kind of organization? We ran into this problem last with the Veterans Corridor Committee, I think, where we, where we waited, I mean, where we made a recommendation, then we decided we probably should have sent it forward to the committee for their thoughts.
There is an existing Solid Waste Committee through the chair. I cannot tell you tonight what the frequency of their meetings are. They have not been meeting regularly.
Thank you.
I think that is the intent of this particular application.
Got to move in favor of this one. Thank you.
We're getting, going to get regular service.
Thank you.
So we have a, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Agenda item 6A, a one-day wine and malt license for North American Matters Church. Enclosed is the application from the North American Matters for a one-day malt and wine license for December 6, 2008, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Agenda item 6B, annual license renewals. Enclosed is the first listing of annual license renewals. All appropriate departments have reviewed the list with no issues. Do we have a motion to approve said list at this time?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
My question is that in the meantime, dated November 20th, we got a letter from Matt Benoit about some issues. Are they not, is that, are those establishments not on this list?
They're not.
They're not on the list in front of us?
6B does not include what Matt had.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Item 6C, Drain Layers License. We have an application from the Mian Company Incorporated for a Drain Layers License. The Board of Sewer Commissioners has recommended the issuance of the license. Motion would be in order to approve the license.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Let me read comments. No comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Agenda item 7A, Police Chief. Enclosed, we have a letter from, from Police Chief Slukas to the Auburn Package Store regarding a recent sting operation. A motion would be in order to schedule a hearing on the alleged sale of alcohol to an underage individual at the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. Agenda item 7B. Enclosed, we have a letter from Chief Slukas asking the authorization to file and accept the following grant funds. From the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, Community Policing Program of $21,717. From the EOPSS through the Highway Safety Division, $5,000 for teen alcohol enforcement. From EOPSS through the Highway Safety Division, $11,400 for traffic enforcement initiatives and related equipment. Through the State 9/11 Department to purchase up to $32,973 in dispatch center equipment through the Public Safety Answering Point Support and Incentive Grant Reimbursement on reimbursement basis. Chiefs, did you have any comments that you want to make on that, or?
I move that we authorize the filing and accept the grant funds.
So moved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Someone?
Must be gone. There was a question a minute ago.
It's all set. It's all set. Agenda item 7C, Police Chief. Enclosed, we have a letter from the Police Chief regarding surplus equipment. A motion would be in order to clear, to declare four vehicles as surplus.
So moved.
Motion in a second. No discussion? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is a vote. The School Department, enclosed is a memo from the School Superintendent regarding the FY 2010 budget, discussing planning. Mr. Hammond?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
Agenda item 7D, School Department. We have a memo from the School Department regarding FY 2010 budget discussions and planning.
I move to take this under advisement.
Well, I second it.
Good discussion. Mr. Weston?
Well, I mean, I think that the Finance Committee should be involved in this, too. I mean, how are we going to guess what's going to happen in the year 2000? I mean, how are we gonna guess what's gonna happen in the year 2010? We can't even figure what's gonna happen next year.
They have been invited.
I believe they have addressed it also to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, they've been invited.
Well, I still like to take on the advisement, because I don't know what they're talking about.
I mean, I, I, I think this is in response to, you know, some earlier discussions that we had, in terms of, of getting together and starting this process early in a coordinated fashion, and I know this is done in other communities where, where these three groups meet early and frequently on the budget. So I guess, I'd wanna know what we need to discuss, but.
Mr. Westlin, do you have any, anything to add to this before we take any action?
I'm here only to hear what was gonna be decided tonight, because we've gone through these down cycles several times. I've been around probably TOO long, but back in the late 80s going into the early 90s, we had the same thing, and the contribution by the Finance Committee to these particular groups seems to run contrary to what we read in the, in our bylaws. The border, the town administrator, town accountant presents a budget to the Select Board for their recommendations and approval, and the school committee, through their principals, through their superintendent, through their business manager, come up with a school budget that they, they present. And in my experience in these, these situations, when the Finance Committee sat on these things, it just seems that nothing really moved too very much. I think it's up to the town administrator to let everybody know, and I was assuming that's gonna be coming through the board as to what's gonna be squeezed, what, what they, we believe are the longs and the shorts of the budget. But we do have a procedure where we start off with a kickoff meeting, that we get a preview estimation as to what our revenues are going to be, and then we go from that with a procedure of approving a capital improvement budget. I've already formulated in my own mind, I think, what we would be looking for, what I would be looking for as an individual on the Finance Committee. But what I would do in recent, in response to that particular letter, is when the Finance Committee meets, probably, excuse me, at the kickoff meeting, just solicit from any member of the Finance Committee who wishes to sit on that board, and certainly, I'm sure that we would get the, the motion to allow that person to sit on the board. I see the word "subcommittee" in there, and I don't know if we'd be formulating a committee or just a couple appointees from the, the board sitting together and just having general discussions, and it's, it's really not a committee, per se, as, as I see it. So with that being said, I don't know what I'll take back to our Finance Committee, the next meeting, other than to share the letter with them and, and see if there's any response, any feelings for a member of the Finance Committee to be there.
Mr. Hammond?
I think the last time we talked about this, I actually brought up, well, Mr. Westlin just stated that this looks like an attempt to create some kind of formal committee or subcommittee with voting rights, a chairman, et cetera. As indicated in this letter, two representatives were elected to serve on such subcommittee. So with that, I, I don't think that that would be a good idea. We have a Finance Committee who gives an opinion, we have a Board of Selectmen who give an opinion, we have a school committee who give an opinion at town meeting. I don't think muddying the waters with another subcommittee giving an opinion on the budget at town meeting would, would, would benefit anybody. Largely depending on who would serve on that committee would, would depend the outcome, in my opinion. So i- if there were to be any discussions, I would, like, just reiterate what Mr. Westlin said. I can understand that if two members from each committee wanted to have informal discussions to discuss the current economic status of the town and to see, you know, what's priority or what's not, I would support that, but I don't support any committee or subcommittee. Similar to the meetings we had with the Planning Board.
It should be a group.
The zoning board, where it was one individual or two individuals, just having informal discussions about where they are and what they are, but there's no official or formal committee, there's no minutes. It's more of a, you know, to keep everybody up to date and keep the lines of communication open across all committees. This looks more like an attempt to have a voting committee. I don't support that.
Mr. Valentine?
Mr. Chair, could I ask that you read the, the request from Dr. Brunel, just so that we, people at home, would have a clear understanding of what it is that was discussed?
She quotes, makes a quote from Ralph Bourne, "A good discussion increases the dimension of everyone who takes part. Challenging, challenging fiscal times are upon us. On that, I believe we can all agree. While thoughtful planning and collaborative discussions are likely always of benefit, we believe that an increase, that these challenging economic times, they're, they are perhaps even more important. As the School Department, we recognize that education of nearly 2,400 students of Auburn takes considerable tax dollars. While we are committed to providing the very best that we can for our students, we recognize the fiscal restraints placed upon us all. To that end, we would like to invite you to work with us to discuss the FY 2010 budget and beyond, to include discussions regarding upcoming school building projects, revenue projections, and how we can work together collaboratively to create a budget timeline that allows ample opportunity for presentation and discussion of the budget by any and all interested parties. At the November 5th School Committee meeting, two representatives were elected to serve on such a subcommittee, Dr. Jane Boggs and Leanne Gibbrey. Along with the two representatives, both Mr. Dede and I, Mary Ellen Brunel, will join in the discussions. We would like to invite both boards to select representatives to meet together and discuss three dates for an initial meeting that will mutually be convenient for all School Department representatives who will attend. Tuesday, December 2nd, Thursday, December 4th, Tuesday, December 9th. We are available beginning at 5:30 p.m., so we will leave it to you to decide the most convenient meeting time. We would be happy to host the meeting at the Randal School on West Street. At that first meeting, we can select additional dates that are convenient for all."
Thank you very much.
Let's just like to reiterate again the comment that Mr. Hammond has made regarding the use of committee, and it should be a, a, you know, it's just wording, and they have to understand that it's not a committee, it's not voting on anything, it's not taking notes, there's no quorum there from anybody.
A working group, perhaps.
A working group, right.
And, and I appreciate you.
And also, I'd like to add that in light of what we're up against, not only in next year, but in the following year, that they're asking about, there is no way, the way the economy is going, that anyone can be on, plan beyond the next fiscal plan, because we have no idea what's going to happen with the government and, and taxes and businesses closing and forfeitures and everything else that are gonna come after the first of the year. So I, I think going beyond, you know, the first year is out of the question totally, as far as I, I would be concerned. Mr. Westlin?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add one thing, and I missed this one. It says to create a budget timeline. As we all know, our bylaws spell out day by day when budgets have to be completed and when they have to be turned in for, in order for us to meet the annual meeting. So.
That's, that's one of the problems that we run into, and then we get it at the last minute, and we get criticized for forwarding along to the Finance Committee, because we haven't had a chance to peruse all the numbers and so on. If they were to adhere to the timeline that's made, and the figures are turned in on time, then we would have a time to make a decision also.
And the revenues that are prepared is for the entire town, not just for the town side and not for just the school side. So those, those revenues will be all looking at the same time. During the kickoff meeting, we, the town accountant and the town administrator present a full, a full budget, if you will, based on anticipation. State, state, state money becomes a big part of that. But as the Finance Committee reviews the budgets, we always call in the department heads. First of all, we open, there's an open invitation for every department head to come before the Finance Committee. It says the Finance Committee may call these people, and there's open invitation for any department head. And certainly, the, the School Department and the Police Department and the Fire Department and the Highway Department, the big budget items, they're almost always expected to come in and, and let us know what, especially if they got any types of new programs. I think, as you just said, as far as staffing and things like that, I don't think we're gonna be entertaining unless there's something very critical that we don't, that I don't know about at this time. I don't think it's gonna be any entertaining on that staff side. So anyhow, there is a process covering most of these things in here.
Mr. Valentine?
So again, I want to thank you for reading it, because when we were, we were talking a lot about the word "subcommittee," and I would, I'd join the rest of you in suggesting that anything formal like a subcommittee, anything giving the appearance that it's another group that might present to town meeting as an example, to me, I'd be against. I wouldn't wanna form any other group, even if it is an alliance between members of current boards. That would be another, another group that would be reporting or that would think that their opinion carries more weight than anyone else's. But the, the body of the letter, to me, speaks a lot more about just collaboration and communication, that we would try to find a way to kind of understand each other's difficulties so that the, some of the discussions about the challenges that we are faced are happening, and we're all hearing about them up front and together at the same time. I would think that it would allow for some directional agreement, and by that, I mean, if we directionally were to point and say that what we, informing this next, this budget, as an example, that we need every, every owner of a budget to look at how to continue to improve, continue to meet their obligations to, for increases, for, for contractual increases, but to find a way to fund that within their own budget, and then ask every single department head to go about trying to solve that problem. It would be an across-the-board methodology, rather than, which what we would do typically, if we don't meet together, is the schools trying to figure out how to solve a problem, and the town side trying to figure out how to solve that problem, and then at some point, leading to town meeting, it gets together. So I would hope that rather than just taking under advisement and not being willing to be part of this, that we would offer a couple of people to go meet, not to create a subcommittee, but to create a working group that would provide for some, and we would ask Charlie and Ed to go with those two members, to create a working group that would be able to have conversations and collaborate about what the challenge is in front of us, understand how each, each team is looking at the whole, and so that it, it does appear by the time we come to town meeting that we've taken a holistic view of it, rather than sit back and, and have the schools argue for what they would like, and the town side argue for what they would like or what they can afford. To me, if there's a possibility of that discussion helping out in the process, it'd be well worth a couple of nights.
Dr. Griffins?
And, and just again, to, to address the concerns that have been laid out here tonight is so, one, is that we, we do use the term "working group," and two, is to, to very explicitly state that by no means does this suggest that we will circumvent the process that's laid out in our bylaws. That, that is the process, that is the budgeting process, and that's the process that's still in place. So by no means will this circumvent that process or timeline stated in our bylaws.
Mr. Westlin?
I, I think we should, if they're worried about the budget, you know, the schools in the year 2010, I think they should go to the Finance Committee, because like I said, you can't figure out what's gonna happen tomorrow, the next day, and how you gonna go two years ahead of time. I don't understand that.
Mr. Valentine?
Carl, the 2010 budget is what starts. The budget that we're begun, that we're working on now is the 2010 budget.
Yeah, but nobody knows for sure what's coming out of that, you know, the budget. I mean, you got them up there talking $800 billion, they're gonna give this to that. So, I mean, all you, all we're gonna do is guess. And I'd much rather have the Finance Committee, they know a lot more than us when it comes to the budget, let them look it over, let them talk, and then come back to us if they need a backup after that, you know. You can do it.
Mr. Hammond?
After listening to Mr. Valentine discuss something, it actually popped in my head that the idea of a conversation, I do support. The way this is written seems to lead somewhere else. So I would at least ask that it be taken under advisement until we get clarification that the school committee, who's requesting this, understands more of what the Selectmen are willing to go ahead with, rather than say, well, we'll go, they're asking for A and we're saying we'll give you B, and let's approve that. So maybe we should tell them we're not, we'll take A under advisement, but we wanna, we wanna see that you understand what this group is. It could be just a total, you know, miscommunication.
The problem is they're looking for a date prior to our next scheduled meeting.
And again, this, this does say "subcommittee." The other thing that I just, it really just popped in my head, and I didn't consider this before, is this is a great idea in principle, but I, and I feel that it will give the school committee, the Selectmen, and the Finance Committee a chance to really hammer through a lot of things that may otherwise, might not be done. But does it leave out the police department's needs? Does it leave out the fire department's needs, the hybrid department's needs? Because they're not gonna have that same ability to have their working group where they can advocate on their behalf as to what they need done. So do you include everybody and give everybody one of these meetings? Do you allow everybody to come to one meeting to advocate what they need? Because if, you know, if you have the schools come in and say, this is what we need, this is what we need, but we never heard from the police department, how can we weigh the police department's needs as we should against the school's needs? We never, we never got to hear what the police department's true needs were. So that's, that's another concern I have with this working group altogether. It just popped in my head, I don't know if it's fair to one department to allow another department to do this without giving them that same courtesy. I, I don't know if they would even want it, but, you know, if I was a department head, if you were giving that courtesy to the school department, I would want the same courtesy for my budget.
And I, I think the expectation is that we do represent the police and the fire and every other department that, that's not the schools, because we don't bring forward to the town meeting a school's budget. The school committee does, but we do bring forward everything else. So I think that the expectation would be, and you're, you're right, the more we, the more we get involved in the details of the budget process, the more I'm right there with you, saying, you know, if I'm gonna advocate for this or that, it means I've got to understand it very well, because any one person can make an argument that is persuasive, and we need to make sure that we understand what the police need next year and the fire as well. So I agree.
Well, I don't disagree with that statement. I would, I would just caution that Mr. Dede, Dr. Brunel, Ms. Gibbrey, and Ms. Boggs know their budget a thousand times better than we as representatives of the police department would know the police department's budget. I don't know the police department's budget nearly as well as Mr. Dede knows the, the school department. So I don't think we can represent the police in that meeting as well as Chief Salukas could represent the police in that meeting. Having Chief Salukas represent the police in that meeting would be the equivalent of Dr. Brunel representing the schools in that meeting, in my opinion. I don't see how Dr. Brunel representing the schools is the equivalent of the Select Board representing the police. So I, I don't disagree, but I think that we don't know the ins and outs of the hybrid department to police department like the department heads do. So I would just leave it there.
Mr. Westlin?
I don't know, I guess the way I look at it, like this, if Mr. Dede and Ms. Brunel wants to, you know, look about the budget, why don't they just go to finance and be just like any other department? just like any other department? Let them go to Finance, talk to Finance, because they're going to know a lot more than we're going to know. And then at least you can get some straight answers. Because we're going to just guess if it's going to be, you know, I know this year's budget, but 2010, we don't even know what's going to happen tomorrow.
So if that's directed to me, if they're, if they're interested in financial technical detail and, you know, the financial minds in towns best guesses as to what's happening with our budgets and what's happening with revenue projections, I agree. If they're rather interested in how do we respond to everything that we hear, both now and over the month of December and January when the data continues to come in, and how is, how are we as a town going to respond to this situation? Are we going to cut, have to make cuts across the board? Are we going to have to have personnel cuts across the board? Are we going to have to, you know, what is it that we're going to have to do as a town? I would think that we would want, that we would benefit from having those discussions all together rather than assuming that the school committee will do their thing with the Finance Committee and we will provide direction with the Finance Committee for the municipal side. It seems to me to be a good idea to, to try to pull this all together.
I agree with Mr. Valentine a hundred percent, but I mean, upon reading that letter, I don't think that's what was requested in that letter. So I, you know, stand by the fact that we take it under advisement, perhaps send a memo or something to the school department telling them what we're willing to do. And if they were willing to have informal discussions with the two members appointed by the chair here, Mr. Westman said he could get a couple of members from the Finance Committee, that'd be fine. But they have elected members to a subcommittee. That's, that's, that's where I, here on the back of my neck stands up. It sounds like a formal subcommittee, so they're asking for A.
I think we've agreed to a compromise.
Very much in agreement, yeah.
So we have a motion and a second? Did you make a motion first or was that just a suggestion?
I made a motion to take it under advisement.
Okay, you were drawing that?
I would withdraw that motion.
Okay, now can we have a motion?
I move to request, I don't even know how to word this now, I think about it. I move to send a counteroffer to the school committee explaining what this board is willing to.
To create a working group?
To create a working, an informal working group. And we can further define that within the memo.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I was just going to, okay.
I mean, I said discussion, you didn't say anything. Do you want to pick a date now?
No.
Or do you want to wait?
I'd wait for a response. I, I would prefer to wait for a response, but we know time is of the essence.
Right. So assuming time is of the essence and there's a, if, if the chair.
If anything comes in that will advise me in the office and I'll contact.
And, and the chair can appoint two people and we can move, right? Because we have the authority to be able to do that with this vote, right? So the chair can appoint two people and we can get going. Great, thank you.
Agenda item seven E. Chief Wainhart is in attendance regarding his request to proceed with the purchase of a pumper this year. Chief Wainhart?
Good evening. Thank you for giving me some time this evening. We have as part of our approved capital improvement program scheduled for this year, the purchase of an engine, a pumper. I spoke with Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Kazanovich and briefly with the chair about recognizing the, the financial hardships and position that we're in, we're all in, of a desire to go ahead with this project for a number of reasons. And I wanted to share those reasons with you this evening and, and get.
Talk to you about that.
Get your feelings on it and desirous of a vote from the board whether to proceed or not. I, I will tell you, I met with Mr. Grossman and we did go ahead with the bidding process in as much as we advertised the bid specs are available, recognizing that at any point in time, we could simply withdraw the bid specs. That way we're, we're meeting the timelines required by Chapter 30B and moving ahead in the process without actually having made any commitment to actually purchase a vehicle. First and foremost of my reasons for wanting to proceed with this is this pumper is going to be replacing our Engine Three, which is a 1975 Mack. So it's 30-plus years old. It is now impossible to buy parts for it. When something breaks, I basically have to call our mechanic and have him get on his forge and start making parts for us. The truck has seen good service, but it's time to retire it. The other reason I want to proceed with this is we're facing some significant changes in the NFPA standards for motorized fire apparatus that will become effective on January 1st. I've polled a number of the manufacturers and asked them, after January 1st, what is all these changes going to do to your price tag? And I've gotten estimates of anywhere from $30,000 to $50,000 more on the price of, of a piece of apparatus. Just to summarize some of the, the major, and the NFPA document is quite lengthy. I've gotten about three quarters of the way through it. It's great bedtime reading if you can't sleep at night. But some of the, some of the substantial things they're, they're going to be doing is, and the, the most substantial is number one, there's going to be a black box recorder required in every piece of fire apparatus, similar to a flight data recorder that you find on an aircraft. They're going to require a seatbelt interface system, which, as you know, in a regular passenger car, you sit and if you don't put your seatbelt on, the bell rings. Well, that's going to be in every seat, but it's not only going to be a bell ringing, it's going to be interface to the truck transmission so that if there's a seatbelt, a seatbelt unbuckled in an occupied seat, it prevents the truck from being put in gear until all of those seatbelts are buckled. That, that's quite a bit of technology. One of the things that's not going to affect us because we're going to be doing it anyways, we've included in the spec is, you've probably seen English or, or British European-type apparatus where they have the reflective chevron striping in the rear, that's going to be a required item. We're actually doing that because of the number of highways we respond to. The axle lock, right now, when you put on the parking brake on a, on any vehicle, typically it locks up the rear axle only. There've been a number of cases over the years where trucks have gone into gear and over, overridden that, so they're going to require front and rear axle locking now when you put on the parking brake. So that, those are, those are the main items that are driving the price up. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions the board might have and get a sense of what the board's feeling is.
Mr. Valentine?
Chief, when, when NFPA does make this kind of change, is there a future date when the requirement would be mandatory to meet? Or would it, in, in the past, historically, has it, has any change like this been grandfathered and you only had to change it when and if you decided to buy new equipment?
This particular requirement, and I was only made aware of the requirement within the last month or so. This particular requirement is going to be in effect for any vehicles ordered or delivered after January 1st.
So I should be clear, my, my question is, do you, I'll give an example, would you be at all concerned that they would, in the future, say that by the year 2012, you have to have all of your equipment meet this requirement?
They have done that in the past. And the example I will give you is all of our apparatus, I'm sure you're, you've noticed now has fully enclosed cabs, four doors, as opposed to the generation before that, which had the open jump seats, as opposed to the generation I started in where we hung on the back step and prayed that we made it to the call. They did put in a retroactive requirement where any apparatus on the road had to meet that standard of being a fully enclosed cab. And that went back to a firefighter a couple of years ago in Brookline, Erwin Gross, who was on a reserved piece of apparatus, was thrown from the jump seat and was subsequently died as a result of his injuries. They have done it in the past. Typically, they don't. And I suspect that things like this, trying to get that black box recorder to interface with the computer systems in our existing apparatus would, would be problematic. So I, I can't guarantee you, but I don't suspect that any of these requirements are going to be made retroactive.
Thank you.
Except possibly the chevron striping.
Okay, which, which you've put in the bid anyway.
Right.
Thank you.
I think based on today's prices and ordering it now versus next year when, when, you know, additional increases take place, that we would be wise to take a vehicle that's 30 years old and, and act on it at this point in time.
That would be my direction as well.
Do we have a motion?
Just one, what's the total cost of this piece of equipment?
We've, in the capital budget, we have $65,000 over five years, a total of $325,000. Factoring in the, the cost of financing, I figured out with some help from Mr. Kazanovich, we're about $290,000 were actual vehicle costs. And then the balance of the 325 would go towards financing. And actually, I'd like to point out too that I'm, I'm very proud of the fact that we're being able to do this for $290,000 because I recently read a newspaper article where one of my colleagues up on the North Shore was very upset because he had asked for $400,000 for a new pumper and the town had only given him $350 and he didn't know how he was going to possibly be able to buy a truck. We're getting, we, we have a very good spec and it's going to be, we're going to be able to do it for the $290.
Mr. Westman?
This is a brand-new truck, isn't it? What year is it?
No, this, this will be a brand-new.
Mr. Valentine?
I move to authorize the chief to continue with the purchase of the pumper for this year.
Do we have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gift acceptances for Mary and Anthony, my CLO, $25 for the Fire Department gift account. From J. and G. Hunt, $50 for the Fire Department gift account. From William and Gail Burgess, $25 for the Fire Department gift account. From Mary Kenny, $100 for the Fire Department gift account. Do we have a motion to, oh, one more. From the Council on Aging, from the Auburn, to the Council, Council on Aging, from the Auburn Historical Society, a 2004 Sony 36-inch television set worth approximately $375. From, from BS Ozomek of Woodbury, Tennessee, $25 for the miscellaneous gift fund of the library. From, from Webster Five, $100 for the Kenner renovation project. Do we have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept the gratitude?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
There's a vote. Item 8B, meeting schedule, recommended board meetings for, for Mondays in December. Need a motion to suggest December 8th and December 15th as the meeting dates. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There's a vote. FY 2010 budget and close of the budget projections and copies of the charter and bylaws regarding the budget. Ed?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We thought it would, it was important to bring the projections to this board. Prior to our presenting it to the Finance Committee, we were scheduled to present it on November 19th. But during the discussions, during the classification hearing, we heard the concerns of the board and some of those issues may have an impact, bottom line, on what we're projecting in the packet before you tonight. And I, as a result of that, I think we'd like to get some clear direction as a result of some of those concerns that were raised, given the fact that it may have a, an impact on the bottom line budget and how that relates to the departments making their request once we get the message out to them at that budget kickoff hearing. I think we're going to try to schedule that pending the action the board may take tonight, next Wednesday on December 3rd. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to go over the budget projections and highlight the assumptions that have been made by the administration, under what premise this was built on. First of all, I'd like to say that we recognize it's going to be a very difficult year. MMA has just put out an article indicating that they believe 2010 is going to be a very bleak year. How that's going to impact us as a community as it relates to the distribution of state aid is unknown. We have built an assumption of a 10% reduction in state aid. Talked to some Department of Revenue officials who have indicated that most communities are planning a, a reduction in state aid. Optimistically, level funded would be best-case scenario, as they see it right now. This budget before you tonight is projecting about a $1.5 million deficit as a result of the following assumptions. Number one, it provides for a 2.5% increase under Prop 2.5. I know that issue was raised as a way to offset a commercial industrial tax rate if we don't tax to the levy limit. This assumption provides for the full 2.5% increase and leaves about $100,000 of excess levy. It uses local receipts based upon last year's actuals with some assumptions of declining revenue in the area of interest income and motor vehicle excise tax. It provides for a 10% reduction across the board in state aid. It provides for debt exclusion as provided for in the, in the bond obligations that we have gone out for, for our high school. And it provides for unavailable funds for about $400,000 of free cash. I want to tell the board, we do have certification of 1.1 million. We could use a portion of that as one-time expenditures. I think it would be, the wrong thing to do to build that in is a permanent revenue source because we know when, we're not going to get free cash certifications to that extent in future years. This budget is a level-funded budget, except for those costs that we know are contractual or fixed. On page three, our debt and interest, we know are, are built, the appropriation is built upon the fact that we do have obligations that we cannot walk away from. It provides for employee benefits. Using historical data, we know that we will not be able to join the GIC for 2010, that savings will not be there. We do have a partially self-secured trust, which is building up some equity, about $1 million today. Hopefully, we can use a portion of that to, to offset any potential increase, estimating about a 12% increase in our health insurance cost. What's the county retirement? We know we're going to expect, based upon information we received a year ago, a three-year increase every year of about 20% to 22%. And it provides for a Medicare increase of about 3% based upon our contractual obligations that this board has negotiated with the unions. that this board has negotiated with the unions. It provides for, across the board, 2.5% increase for those contracts that we know have already been negotiated. There are some out there that are currently before the board. It appears the trend has been 2.5. That's what we built into the model. It provides for a 2.5% increase, as I stated earlier, under the provisions of Proposition 2.5. It's about $737,000 of increased tax levy. It provides for additional new growth. We had about $900,000 this year. We're expecting that to fall off pretty sharply, given the current economic situation and the slowdown in the housing market. Like I said, our motor vehicle excise tax, we're expecting there's a reduction. I think there's an awareness statewide that sales are off. We're expecting an adjustment as a result of that. So when you put all that together into the mix, we're expecting, once again, about a $1.5 million deficit with an emphasis on a state aid reduction of 10%. Now, that 10% reduction in state aid represents approximately about $1.1 million. So even if we were to get level state aid, we're still looking at a deficit of about $400,000 to $500,000, provided we're taxing to the extent up to $100,000 of excess levy. Which leads us to a discussion or analysis that we've made about Auburn's share of state aid and how it compares to other communities. There is a series of bar charts that I'd like to go over with the board right now. And I think we're going to find an interesting analysis based upon some of the data we were able to obtain. We did a comparison for Auburn, Milbury, Shrewsbury, Oxford, and Lester. In how our share of state aid, what impact that would have on the tax rate if we were getting a higher share of state aid. Auburn, these are FY 08 cherry sheet distribution numbers. Auburn received 7.6 million, about 7.7. Milbury, about 9.2. Shrewsbury, 25.5 million. Oxford, 13.1 million. And Lester, 12.7 million. That translates as a percentage of the total budget, of their budget, each community's budget. Auburn's is about 16.55%. Milbury's is about 26.53%. Shrewsbury's is 27.93%. Oxford's is 38.39%. Lester's is 47.75%.
Every one of those that we're comparing to, Auburn is on a dual tax rate, and they're on a single tax rate.
That's correct.
Correct?
That's correct.
So if we could get the great general court to put us on, you know, a single and get reimbursement, then we would be up to the others. We could lower our, get more reimbursement from the state and lower our tax rate.
Well, I'm going to show later on in the analysis what our single tax rate would be as compared to these communities that already have a single tax rate. I had some discussions with DOR. Early indication is that the distribution is not based on the community's tax rate classification. In other words, we're not being penalized because we have a split tax rate. Quite honestly, we don't know what's driving these numbers, but we are going to find out what's driving these numbers. We looked at different demographics of each community to see if there's a sign here of why we may be receiving less than other communities. And quite honestly, it's not jumping out. On a median family income, and these are census numbers that were taken in 1999, Auburn's median family income is $60,805. Milbury's is $62,000. So one would say ours is lower, and Milbury, maybe we should be getting a larger share of state revenue because ours is lower. That's not the case. Shrewsbury is $77,000 median family income. Oxford is $58,000. Lester's is $64,000.
Now, just before you go further, the example which is reimbursed at $77,674 median income versus Auburn's $60, and they're at a single tax rate, if Auburn were single, then Auburn should be much, you know, that's just the census information on the income. Well, I know it's just average, but we should benefit by being single with state contribution, I would think.
Mr. Chairman, that particular biograph is just on the demographic information that Ed is talking about. And it's showing that there's a $17,000, $17,000 a year difference in median income. And what he mentioned before is a $18 million difference in state aid. But this is the demographics of those towns.
Right. They get a greater percentage of state aid than we do.
Correct.
And we're lower.
So we looked at the EQV to find out if that was driving what distribution difference may be. As you can see, Auburn, EQV per capita, and it's high because of a high, excuse me.
Sorry. What's EQV?
Equalized value.
Equalized value.
Total equalized value. In other words, if you value a building, you value a residential home, our total value is about $2.7 billion.
Oh, I see.
If you were to break that down on a per capita basis, our EQV per individual is about $129,000. Milbury's is $114,000. Shrewsbury's is $151,000. Oxford's is $99,000. Lester's is $90,000. What we were trying to see is make a correlation between these biographs and the ones showing the state distribution, and they're not jiving. So there's something else driving the distribution of state formula that we do not know. I know there are separate funding schedules or formulas for Chapter 70 and lottery aid, but it's not matching up with these demographics. So what we did is, we said, okay, Auburn, if we were to receive what Lester was getting, in other words, if we got, if 47% of our budget was received in state aid, what would that do for our single tax rate? In Lester's case, the single tax rate would be $7 per thousand. If we got Lester's share of state aid, our tax rate would be $7 per thousand. If we got Milbury's share of state aid, it would be $11.63. Now, keep in mind that when the assessor came before the board, our single tax rate would have been $14.89. So just, as a result of our limited share of state aid, we're taxing more to make up that difference. In Oxford's case, our single tax rate, if we got their share of state, it would be $9.04. In Shrewsbury's case, it would be $11.33. To me, that's very disturbing. And we would like to meet with the delegation to find out more about why Auburn is not getting its fair share of state aid. There's got to be something out there that is driving these numbers, and I think we need to get to the bottom of it.
I've already spoken to a future Senator and to Representative Frost concerning this.
So Ed, through the chair, to Ed, so we've asked about this before because this is not new news to us. And there is this complicated, I think it's been described to us as a wealth formula. But I don't think it's as simple as looking at, it's not as simple as looking at what we're looking at here. And I've never been able to figure it out myself. But I think, again, and it hits us, and I think what we have to remember in this community, it hits us on many different levels because it hits us, it hits us on the schools as well, in terms of what we get from the state. And it hits us when we look at our reimbursements on something like Bay Path, where, again, you look at the charts of Bay Path in terms of what we pay per student at Bay Path versus the other participating schools, again, injustice. And so it's one injustice piled on top of the other. So it is critical to get to the bottom of this.
Sir Carr?
Mr. Chairman, what we'd like to do is meet with the delegation, the state representative and the Senator-elect. And I think that it's important to note two biographs that I think are very telling. The median income is a $17,000 spread, median income, between Shrewsbury and Auburn. And yet, on state aid, there's an $18 million spread between Shrewsbury and Auburn. And with all the gyrations that go into the formula, that's still a significant.
Yeah. And they have a heavy, you know, commercial retail base. So that's not it. That's not it.
But we had, we felt we had an obligation to first come in here based upon the discussion we had two weeks ago. We held up, as Mr. Westlin said, the kickoff from November 19th until perhaps next Wednesday. And we would be meeting with the delegation, but we wanted to bring that information in here first.
Okay. I spoke to Senator-elect Moore today in my office, and he already has people lined up for meetings, already, you know, wanting to get on board with things that they're looking for. So I think we need to get to them to schedule something and not wait.
Can't plan, we plan to be.
Mr. Chairman?
Just remind me, what is the ratio of Chapter 70 to all of our state aid?
How much of all of our state aid is Chapter 70?
I think, I think Chapter 70 is roughly 5.1 million versus the total cherry sheet of 8 million and change. So it's probably 60%.
It's big enough that that formula is a major thing that we have got to understand. And I know we've, it just speaks to that collaboration that we talked about before with the schools to make sure that we put the appropriate pressure on because that, we have to be able to find something there that would describe. You've done a great job looking for the other obvious things. And quite frankly, I appreciate it because one of the things you went after has been told to me several times as the reason, that if I would just look at median average income, I would find out that Auburn is more wealthy than all these other towns around. And, you know, we needed to do this amount of data gathering just to be able to say, so that's just a myth, that is not correct, and you're not able to find it in any simple evaluation. So that, Chapter 70 formula is one that we've just got to get to understand.
Mr. Hammond?
First of all, thank you for putting this together. It's great. It's really good, especially after the debate we had a couple of weeks ago regarding the taxes, the tax classification. It leads me to a lot more understanding. And publicly, I do owe you an apology for some of the debate last week. I did misspeak on a few things, so to Ms. Kazanovic, I apologize for that. It's not very often you hear politicians say this, sorry, but.
More and more, increasingly.
With that, I have a few questions regarding this. The first one is, are we, the way the state figures what our state aid is, do they base it off our revenue and then figure out what our state aid is? Or do they figure out our state aid, and then we figure out what we got to tax? In other words, my question, is the chicken coming for the egg or the egg for the chicken? We're taxing right now, I think you said 14.89 if we were a single rate. Because we're taxing 14.89, do they look at us and say, well, we don't have to give you as much state aid? Or do we look at them and say, well, because you're giving us so little state aid, we're at a 14.89?
Actually, I think it's quite the opposite. I think there was a component within Chapter 70 which looked at how much of the tax levy you were, in other words, what your excess levy capacity was. If you were not taxing to the max, you were being penalized.
That's right.
Yep. So they, and they may have changed the formula, but at one point in time, because a community may have decided to be financially prudent and maybe put money away in stabilization and not taxed to the max and come up with some long-term financial planning that left some excess levy capacity for something the town wanted. It forced the communities, the municipalities, to tax as high as they could so they wouldn't lose that Chapter 70 state aid distribution. They wouldn't be penalized. As it stands now, as it relates to the other cherry sheet items, it is my understanding that that formula is already predetermined. No matter what you tax at, you wouldn't be penalized. So the state distribution would come regardless of where you are in terms of setting the tax rate, whether it be single, whether it be dual, or to what extent you were taxing at.
So, okay. So it really doesn't have a correlation at all? Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't believe it does. But I think that's what we're trying to figure out. And I think that's why we want to meet with the delegation.
So we still don't know the root cause as to why we're getting so much less?
No.
Than everyone else? Although the obvious one is, well, we're dual tax rate, nobody else is. They stated that that wouldn't have an effect.
And if that were the case, then I think it would be in the town's best interest to ultimately go back to a single tax rate because we're losing our.
Right. Because we're kind of biting our nose despite our face type thing. But that has not been proven yet.
No.
But it has not been proven, not true either, other than somebody just said it's not true.
No. I've talked to our DOR representative who indicated to me, because we met on setting the tax rate for the FY 09 fiscal year, that he had, he believed that it had no, it had no, it wasn't in the formula of distribution. The fact that Auburn has a dual tax rate did not mean that Auburn was getting less in terms of state aid. So it has to be something else, unless that ultimately is proven to be wrong, which.
People are being charged because of retail business.
See, and a dual tax rate, though, if you were to throw out a dual tax rate in the, what's it, 22 per thousand and something like that right now for commercial?
I think it's 23 per thousand, 11 and change on the residential.
So when you factor in the fact that it's a dual tax rate, and this is probably a little confusing, but 2.5% on 23 grows a heck of a lot faster than 2.5% on 11. So because of that compounding factor, aren't we indeed increasing our tax rate a little faster than the others who have a single? Because every time we tax to the max on 22, we're actually taxing a dollar for dollar.
That's not going to change your tax levy. If you were at a single tax rate, you're still going to raise the same amount of tax levy as you would if it were split.
Why?
Because of equalized value. Equalized value does not change. We have $2 billion worth of value whether we have a single tax rate or whether we have a dual tax rate. So all you are doing as a result of the dual tax rate, you're putting a heavier burden on a commercial industrial, less on the residential. If you move to the middle, it's still 14 and change, you're still raising the same amount of money.
Okay.
And that's more than likely why it doesn't get factored into the formula. Because your month gets fixed, it's just how it's distributed.
I guess, how do we end up at 14 and change, and everybody else is in the 11s?
That's because of state aid. That's what we're seeing. Because of their larger share of state aid, they can tax less. They're raising, because they're getting a larger share of state aid, they don't have to raise as much in taxation.
But aren't they all max tax levy? Aren't they all going to the max on tax levy?
I don't know.
Okay.
But the scenario that's before you in this analysis here, at $7 per thousand at a single, would mean that would, there'd be a lot of excess levy left on the table. And if there were excess levy left on the table, I'm not so sure that, I'm sure budgetary requests would come in to try to chew into a portion of that.
If we threw out a, like, an actuary hypothetical illustration, showing like a comparable illustration with the DOR? illustration, would the DOR entertain running hypothetical state aid on it? Because we don't know the formulas. So say we ran a hypothetical, 11.87 is our single tax rate. Can you tell us, if that was indeed the case, can you tell us what our state aid would be versus what we are? I mean, is there anyone we can go to where we can say, we want a few hypothetical illustrations? If our tax rate was single, if, you know, what would our state aid be? If our tax rate was single and less, what would our state aid be?
Provided it plays a part in the state aid distribution, I'm sure they could do that. And I think that's what we're trying to figure out.
Because I think that might not be a bad idea. If we threw a few different scenarios at them, just to see if it does change state, I mean, if they have the formulas and we don't know them, it sounds like we can't get a good grasp on all the formulas together. Somebody has to have them. If we just threw a, you know, can you run a hypothetical illustration? They do it in investments all the time. Assuming 11.87 single rate for Auburn, all else things being equal, what would our state aid come back as? Could we ask those questions to the DOR?
Mr. Chairman, I think if we have the delegation on board, we could go to DOR and ask them for...
For the hypotheticals?
Yeah, ask them to do some simulations.
Dr. Grivens?
So I assume in that discussion of picking up on that, what we need to separate out is we want to identify anything that's under our control that we can change to make it a more favorable state aid environment versus those things that are fixed that we can't control, like medium income. Population's another one, I think, that gets factored into that. The size of the population, how it's distributed, I think, is the other variable that's there. And the other question I had for you, going to another part of your projections, is what's the county retirement? That 22% that you laid out, is that projecting the whack we're taking on, so it's not even there yet?
No.
The whack on the fund?
You know, loss on investment.
Yeah, I mean, that fund's never performed well to begin with. We've always, I'm sorry.
Most of it is transferred over to the state now.
State, but there's still some...
Very small. I forget the number, there's very small locally. Most of it has gone to Parac.
But they have taken, Parac has taken a huge hit.
Yeah, because I know that's the one they're projecting now, is that those retirement benefits are fixed and the money they're coming from is taking a serious whack and it hasn't been projected yet.
I think there's a move afoot to reamortize that unfunded liability over a larger period of time. I think the special legislation, I think it was at 28 years. We were on a 26-year funding schedule. They didn't go to the full 28. Quite honestly, that was a, that is not a decision only Auburn can make. It's a committee or a joint vote. So there may be a move afoot to extend it from 28 to, say, like, 40 years. Now, whether, certainly that's going to take, that's going to soften the blow a little bit, but to what extent, we don't know. Given, you know, the losses I'm sure that they've realized over the past year, what impact that would have on us in 2010, we don't know. All we knew at the time that we were building these is, in the next three years, they told Auburn, expect a 20% to 22% increase in its assessment.
Mr. Carr?
Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Grivens's point, I want to draw a distinction. What these biographs are showing are the weaknesses or inconsistencies in the structure as opposed to the appropriation or the return on investments. The return on investments with the state's retirement board are, as you know, as has been reported, way off. So too local aid. So we're talking tonight about the formula and the ingredients that go into the distribution and what they should be and not necessarily what's appropriate. For instance, the state's October revenues were off $50 million in '08 over the '07 revenues. But that was $10 million better than what the A and F department had projected at the end of September. Now, in our current nine, we have not had any indications that there'll be a desire to get 9C powers by the governor. But we have only finished one quarter of the fiscal year. So I just want to make the point to anyone who's listening, the report is talking about the structure and how the numbers are built, but not the appropriation or not the revenues collected by the state and then distributed back in.
Any other comments?
On the whole presentation?
So I guess I want to, maybe it's a bit of a, maybe I want to test where Mr. Hammond was going last meeting, because I tend to agree with him that the board should take a more active role than we have in the past. Given this information, is the board inclined to ask the finance committee and to, you know, send forward the, to kick off this process and ask for a balanced budget to be found that is $1.5 million off of this year's budget, of this projection? I mean, is that what we want to do as a board, is to, you know, ask for the cuts to be identified so that we will understand what a 2010 budget is that's $1.5 million less? If we didn't want to raise 2, if we, we might argue we have to do that, and if we didn't want to raise the 2.5, which is something that Nick talked about last week, then we'd have to ask them for $2.2 million of cuts. But, so I'd just like to have some discussion about kind of what direction the board's elected might want to give.
I have a feeling Ed generally is somewhat conservative when he's saying $1.5 million. And I think we're going to be looking at numbers greater than that. And we need to be extremely cautious in any planning for next year because, as I said before, the bottom's going to fall out of a lot of businesses and it's going to have an effect on, it's going to trickle down effect and it's going to affect everyone.
So are you suggesting we need to plan for more than $1.5 million cuts?
That's what I feel.
Mr. Hammond?
I'm going to make a motion on this and open it up for discussion, I hope. But I would, I would make a motion that we prepare a budget with a 0% increase on tax levy, not the full 2.5. As hard as it is to look at this, it's even harder to look at it at home. People can't afford a 2.5% increase on their taxes. I understand the ramifications and I understand the magnitude of what I'm saying in terms of the budget creation, but I also understand the struggles residents have and the struggles businesses are going through. And so with that, I move that we prepare a budget without any 2, with a 0% increase in tax levy.
And what about the 1.5 million on top of it?
Well, that's already in this budget. It would be on top of it. But, you know, a vote against this, in my opinion, is a vote to increase taxes in the worst time possible.
Ed, is there a possibility you could give us some numbers on what Nick mentioned?
I can tell you right now. It'd be, provided that the assumption for state aid stays at minus 10, and certainly we can adjust that as numbers become available. We expect the first budget to be released sometime in the end of January. You can add 2.5% of our current levy would be $737,000 in addition to the 1.5 or 1.4 and change.
So 2.2.
2.2.
I can write a check.
You'll take it? Yeah, I'll bounce them.
Play basketball with it.
So anyone have a motion?
I made a motion to prepare a budget with a 0% increase in taxes.
So you're not taking into consideration that 100, the 1.5 million dollar...
I fully understand the magnitude, like I said, but the problems at home are just as bad, if not worse, than the problems here. And $736,000 we're discussing is $736,000 out of the residents and businesses' pockets into the town coffers, which may be desperately needed here, but in my mind are more desperately needed for these people who are losing their jobs, their houses and their businesses right now.
So if, in fact, your motion really states that we're looking to cut the budget by $2.2 million?
In my opinion, a vote against my motion is a vote to increase taxes. And this time, I can't support an increase in tax. I understand it's hard, but I can't support increasing taxes on residents and businesses in this time. I mean, people are losing their jobs, you can go on forever, but I just can't. So I understand the ramifications, I understand the type of hole the town would be in, but it's already happening to the people out on the streets, so I mean...
It's happening elsewhere. If you read the papers, it's, you know, not unique to Auburn. Everyone knows that. So that's in the form of motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Westlin?
Yeah, and I could agree because I don't know what the future's going to bring, but it doesn't look that good from what I understand. And I tell you, you know, we got to worry about the residents and everybody else in town. I mean, that's the only way I can look at it. If we don't go far it, we're going to have a lot more problems. Don't forget, we get the heat and everything else coming up. And they're talking maybe four bucks a gallon for diesel, I mean, you know, for home heating oil. And, you know, this already started for the winter. So I mean, you know, I'd love to try it, unless, you know, I second the motion on it.
Any other comments?
So I would, I actually don't see a horrible downside of it. I will tell you that I will vote no. I'd rather us direct to find a budget that's $1.5 million cuts that could be balanced and does assume the 2.5% increase. But I'm certainly aware that if it does passes, if it does pass, excuse me, you know, we still get the benefit of work, of having the department heads and having the different departments work through the process of establishing what those cuts would have to be if that's the decision that eventually gets made to have to cut 2.2 million. So from that standpoint, that's why I say there's not necessarily a downside.
I think it should be done upfront, not play games personally.
And I also will vote no, not that I'm a fan of taxes, but I think it's already going to be painful to run a scenario with a $1.5 million increase. It's going to be very painful to find those savings across a town government that's already been strained over the last, you know, probably going back 10 years now, so. But I think we should run the scenario of the $1.5 million decrease.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
No.
Dr. Grivens?
No.
Mr. Westlin?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman, yes.
Agenda item 8D, petition for health trust, GASP 45, and authorized, as authorized by the special town meeting, the board would need to vote to petition the great and general court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to enact the legislation for the town of Auburn to create a health trust to fund GASP 45.
Second.
All those in favor? Under old business, the MIS director, this item has been tabled from the last meeting. The information has been sent to the MIS working group. School projects, no change. Screen acceptance procedure, no change. Veterans corridor, no change. Cemetery land, no change. Conflict of interest, no change. Bar braav, no change. School buildings committee, Schedule 19, no change. The gas and diesel bid specifications enclosed are the draft specifications for dees and geesel, excuse me, gas and diesel bids. I was looking through this, unless I overlooked it, I didn't see the bid amounts in here.
Was the specification...
Just the specifications, not the bids.
No, we sent the specifications to the board for input before they would be sent out.
Okay. So do we need a motion on that to approve this?
The board wanted to hold it, take it under advisement, was the vote, was it?
To review it.
Make a motion. No, it's good. No, I mean, I got no complaints.
Is that separate or combined?
Separate.
Gas is one and diesel is the second.
That's correct.
The separate bids.
They both have to be available 24/7. Okay, that happen in the form of motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I didn't hear the motion.
Motion was to send out two bids, one for regular gas and one for diesel. Split the bid.
Wait, we have it here.
Right. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Legislative issues, are there any? Anyone have anything for miscellaneous?
Just to put on a future agenda item, that at some point in the near future, you know, coming out of the tax classification hearing, that we devote a meeting on an off night for economic development discussion, that we devote an entire meeting and that we invite in the appropriate parties, Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Committee, perhaps we get somebody from the state that comes in as well. I think, again, the issue that comes up repeatedly, we get a high-ranking representative from Simon Mauls in here to talk about their long-range plans since that's the engine that really drives the retail space here in Auburn, but that we, we address some of these issues that seem to just come up every year during the tax classification where, and without really thinking about how we can devise a wider-reaching strategy, long-term, to look at that into town. So it's not something that we need to, you know, scope out this evening, but that we think about and how we would devote an entire evening, whether we do it on a Saturday or something like that, but to have all the representative parties here.
Or fifth Monday, for example.
Whatever.
The next fifth Monday we have.
Okay, do you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I'll put it in the form of a motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, there's a vote. Anyone else have anything for miscellaneous? Mr. Hammond?
Just a request from the chair if there's any update on the allegations of gift-giving by Selectman Grivens regarding the diamond vote to the chair. Did you?
No, there was, I had an additional discussion with Mr. Grivens. As he had stated, it was stated by counsel that it would have to be voluntary, it can't be required. I don't know if Mr. Grivens misunderstood me when we spoke, because he made reference to, the day before, in one of his comments, I don't know if he misunderstood me, that Selectmen were making deals with vendors. It's the planning board that has made deals with vendors, which is customary throughout the entire country. When you work out deals, like, to sell a waste down on the west side of Auburn, or Sovereign Bank on the road, which is in addition to the building, when the Auburn Mall was being built, the plans for the construction in the square by Mass Turnpike, that's what I was referring to when I spoke to him. So if he took that as being something else, I just wanted to clear that up this evening.
And, you know, I thank Mr. Grossman for making those comments. We actually did discuss that. And my concern is the association of that, and it was within the discussion of removing the restrictions from this license, and it was the appearance, and that's the way I phrased it. It was my concern with the appearance of any discussions regarding gifts, whether real or imagined, associated with a license. I think licenses have to stay completely separate. I think we should have a board policy about accepting gifts when people have business before the board. It should become part of our conflict of interest policy. I still have major concerns about any associations. The planning board is an entirely different thing. They have a process where it's done publicly. It's done, you know, on the record. The applicant has a way of taking those to court, as we've seen with the Sovereign Bank. Very different matter with the board's election.
Mr. Westlin?
Yeah, but Bill, you made it to the selectmen. Three of us, we issued the license. That's what I'm concerned about. I took it personal.
Yeah.
And everyone should hear.
No.
And that's why...
And I raised, I raised the concerns as I was directed to do, that I had that conversation with Mr. Grossman the night before, when he was telling me this was coming forward and I asked him why it was coming forward. This was the only reason that was given to me.
He didn't say anything about any gifts being...
He didn't say anything about any gifts being given.
The discussion was, and you can get the direct quote from Attorney Hennigan, but was the fact that we needed to be more business-friendly and then there was mention of businesses being more forthcoming with gifts. And there was no discussion of the planning board that evening. That raised very grave concerns on my part.
Putting words in my mouth. I disagree with what you're stating right now.
And you have every right to do so.
Well, the way I take it is, if you so, say you have all this information, you know about it, look me straight in the eyes and tell me if you're talking about me or the other members of the board.
No, I had a discussion with you, Mr. Westman. You're concerned about other allegations that I know nothing about and involving people I know nothing about.
Then where did this all come from? This come out of a clear blue sky?
This all came from that we issued a license in violation of a board policy that had been in effect since 1985 of issuing a license without restrictions. And it wasn't on the agenda, it appeared magically as an agenda item, was not, it was read as an agenda item that was not on the agenda that I had, that three members of the board had knowledge of.
You weren't informed that it was going to be on the agenda prior to the meeting? That it was added after the agenda was made out?
With no request from the applicant.
Doesn't have to be.
No, but I'm saying we violated a policy that's been in effect since 1985 with no request from the applicant, and so when those discussions occurred, it caused concerns.
Now, causing a concern and accusing someone of taking funds are two different things, or taking money.
No, nobody accused anybody. I said I had concerns with the association, the appearance of any discussion of gifts associated with a license when somebody is actively in front of the board. I never accused, and I've clarified that repeatedly.
Well, how else do you think we should take it, then? You made an accusation.
That we should have the discussion that we're having with Mr. Grossman, that this, we as a board, that we agree that we will not do that, we will not have those discussions.
Well, let me tell you, I got a couple of choice words, but we're on television, I'll let them go.
That's fine, Mr. Westman.
Anyone else have any comments?
We'll take a five-minute break before we go into our executive session, in case the press has any questions to ask. We'll need a motion to go into executive session in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 23B, to deliberate upon matters which done in an open meeting could detrimentally affect the position of the town regarding strategy with respect to collective bargaining, litigation, and to investigate charges of criminal misconduct or to discuss the filing of criminal complaints to come out of executive session only to adjourn.
We have a motion.
Make a motion that we...
Do we have a second, executive?
Second.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Grivens?
Yes.
Mr. Grossman, yes.